He said he's here. I don't see any, but Ed, do you want to ask if anybody like needs to sit down who might be older or if anybody was willing to give up their seat for an older person? Or if there are, if there are any empty seats? People could fill in, like people could fill in? Maybe people could raise a hand if there's a seat empty next to them or something?
Who wants you to do that?
You want me to do that? I will. I guess I'll have to do it when we start and be quiet.
This is your first practice for being chairwoman?
Is my mic on? I can go speak into the mic so that we're heard on another table.
Yeah, mine's on.
All right, we're just waiting for one more member who is in the parking lot somewhere. You didn't need to stop chatting. Oh, here he is, okay.
If anyone has an empty seat next to them, can you raise your hand so someone in the back can use it?
Does anybody want to sit down? In the back?
Does anyone need it, need to sit down, can't stand for that long? And maybe someone would give up a seat for you? No? Everybody's good?
Okay.
Okay, because there are a couple of empty seats. Okay.
Okay, let's get started. This is the July 24, 2018 Town and Antica Board of Appeals meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Somebody second that?
Yep.
Sure, if you second it, any further discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then how about make somebody making a motion to approve the minutes of the June 13 meeting, 2018. Sorry. Check one. Better? Okay, just remember to speak into our mics.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, the motions were made to approve the minutes of June 13, 2018. You want to second that as well? Okay, you don't have to be angry about it.
We're just approving minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, so that motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, getting to old business. 2018 Surfside Crossing LLC, Surfside Crossing 40B for the applicant.
Good afternoon. Jamie Feely, the proponent for the application, one of them.
You have to speak louder.
Okay, how's that? Okay. Good afternoon. I want to provide a brief overview on a number of items that have moved forward since our latest, our last meeting on June 13. Much of this update was, was included in a letter we sent to the ZBA at the end of last week. But first, I'd like to thank the ZBA for their time and thoughtful consideration of this application. We recognize that this is a difficult process for all concerned and understand the frustrations that some feel. Some of this comes from the extended time period involved. We submitted our plan for Surfside Crossing in December. Since then, a number of important steps have occurred. Review by Mass Housing, comments from the Select Board and Town Department heads, to Town Housing's, excuse me, Mass Housing's review, then our initial public meetings, and most recently, the launch of the peer reviews last week. These are all critical steps and have offered a great deal of feedback. In order to move forward in the most constructive and coordinated way possible, the Surfside Crossing team will incorporate as much feedback as is practical, including peer review feedback, into an updated proposal. We suspect that many of the, much of this extended timeframe without changes to the proposed plan has been an indicator that we will not make modifications. This is not the case. From our perspective, we want to assure the board and the public that we are listening to the comments that have been made. We appreciate the recent letters from the Select Board, the NPEDC, the Planning Board, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the HDC, as well as the many, many in-person meetings we have had and continue to have with various community members. Once we have the peer review reports, we look forward to incorporating as much of the feedback as is feasible in a comprehensive response. This will allow us to revise our proposal in a comprehensive manner, including both technical issues, issues like sewer and stormwater management, as well as overall design concerns. From a legal perspective, we will reserve our right to continue to pursue the original plan. However, it is our sincere hope that we will find a way to work together with the ZBA and others in the community to come with, come up with a program that has broad support. We remain committed to market rate condos as they're the key to supporting greater availability of housing options for year-round residents. We will also consider restricting some of the market rate condos once we determine any modifications the condos, to the condo section of the plan. Interestingly, our own recent and continuing market research is indicating a much higher demand for the two and three-bedroom condo units. If we modify the plan to align more with that demand, that in itself would result in reduced overall numbers of units, although that is not the limit of our thinking. Either way, we believe the condos will help address the current void in the market by providing additional options for middle-income, year-round Anticaters. With the condos, over 71% of the project as currently designed is focused on providing year-round housing. Meanwhile, a few updates on various other fronts.
Jamie, can I interrupt you for one minute?
Yes.
Only because I made a slight error. The HDC is in, is in attendance and they're, they have, they have a quorum here, so they need to open a, their meeting, if you will.
Okay.
So can you just let them do that?
Sure.
So Ray, are you going to do that?
Yeah.
I just don't want to get in trouble with the open meeting law.
So I call this meeting of the Antica and Sparky's Commission to Order. It is what time is it?
4:45.
4:45 on Tuesday, July 24. President today is me, Ryan Coon, Stephen Walsh, and myself.
Thank you. Sorry for that interruption.
No problem. So, just to run through some of these other general updates. Archaeology, our archaeological consulting firm, Public Archaeology Lab, did I lose the mic? Can you hear me? You're good?
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Public Archaeological Lab, aka PAL, has completed its review of the project site and is submitting a hard copy report to the Massachusetts Historical Commission in accordance with the appropriate regulations. The report states that no significant finds were made, and the report concludes that, quote, "The site has limited content in terms of cultural material and that additional investigation is unlikely to yield additional information. No further archaeological investigation of the Surfside Crossing project area is recommended," end quote. Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. We've submitted a letter explaining that impacts on the rare species can be mitigated off-site. We have Brian Madden from LEC here, and he's prepared to explain this point further. Traffic report update. We've supplemented the original traffic study with an amended traffic study dated July 12, 2018. The amendment includes an updated traffic volume count conducted on June 28, 2018, which was performed in response to concerns about the timing of our initial studies. You will note the changes from the original calculations are consistent with the earlier modeled calculations for that same time period. We have the traffic consultant here today and are prepared for him to present his report. School impact, although school impact is not permissible, permissible increase under 40B, we have reached out to the superintendent of schools to request copies of other school impact reports that may have been done in relation to other housing developments recently permitted. We are potentially willing to help with such a study depending on the scope, but only once the project is actually permitted. Lighting plan, we've now submitted a lighting plan from our consultants, Light Insight Design. We can arrange for them to attend one of the upcoming meetings to walk you through the plan and if you let us know which meeting you'd like it to be on the agenda. Lastly, I'd like to let you know that we have recently received a request of our architects at Emeritus to step away from the project, and we are now in process of bringing in new architects, something we expect to complete before the next session. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board with your permission, Mr. Chair, or for them to direct questions to other members of our team who are present today, including my partner Josh Posner, attorneys Reed and Hanley, our 40B attorney Peter Freeman, our civil engineer Don Bracken, our traffic consultant Dan Dumay, and our environmental consultant Brian Madden. If there are no questions at this time, we can turn it over to Brian Madden and propose Dan presents the traffic study following Brian, or whatever the chair's preference is.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Feely right now? I have a question. Can we do a peer review of, of the archaeological study? I want to, yes? So do, we would like to do that.
Okay.
So, do we have to go, I assume we have to go through the same tedious process? Forgot that. All right, just a minute, just so everybody knows, unfortunately, some of the lag in terms of getting these peer reviews back is that you have to go through the town procurement process. So it's not, we just call up a consultant and they're on board the next day. It takes quite a while to go through that process, and that's why we don't really, we don't have any peer review back yet. We started the process immediately, so.
And I didn't mean to suggest otherwise.
No, I, I didn't mean this. Yeah. So, does everybody agree that a peer review of the archaeological work makes sense?
Yes.
I do.
Okay, so Eleanor, you'll do what, what's that?
Do a motion.
Okay. Do a motion. So can you get, I get a motion to hire a peer review?
I'll make the motion to hire a peer review for the archaeological study.
Second.
Kieran seconds it. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do I need to all call that? Okay, so that's that. Why don't we quickly hear from Brian Madden about the notion of mitigation off-site and natural heritage and, and?
Good afternoon. Brian Madden from LEC Environmental Consultants. So at the last meeting, I believe there were some questions about the status of the review with natural heritage, and we submitted a letter last week. We provided an update, and I just wanted to give you all an update as well. We've been engaged on a pre-filing basis with natural heritage for nearly a year at this point. The site is located within a priority habitat of rare species, specifically for state-listed rare moths. There's an ongoing moth survey being conducted on-site. And in addition to the letter I submitted, we did reach out to natural heritage and they did provide a response via email, and I can read that right now and provide it to the board if requested. But essentially, I believe the questions were, is natural heritage going to require some level of project redesign, modifications, or require on-site mitigation? And the answer to that is no. And I'll just turn to the email. This is from Jesse Lettich, who's the chief of Regulatory Review, Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program, Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. Based on our review of the proposed project on a pre-filing basis, this is to confirm that, that on-site mitigation, land protection would not necessarily be required for the proposed project to meet the long-term net benefit standard of a conservation management permit, 321 CMR 1023. As we have discussed, providing funding to a qualified conservation entity to support a specific division-approved land protection, conservation, research, habitat management, and/or conservation planning project would likely represent a suitable option for addressing the long-term net benefit standard. And I can give this to the board.
Yeah, please give that to Eleanor, but if I heard you correctly, you said not necessarily. So they didn't say you are, do not have to mitigate.
In a pre-filing basis, they will not make conclusive statements to that effect, but...
That's not surprising.
But I think that letter, or that email, the intent of it is, they're not going to require on-site mitigation, and through the conversations we have to date, dating back to, I think it was August of last year we started this, they won't, they won't require any specific on-site land protection or redesign based on the current project that's...
Is that fairly typical? I mean, I...
In, in some respects, yeah. Depending upon the habitat landscape, species in question, oftentimes you can provide off-site mitigation to go through the permitting process.
And does off-site mitigation mean you have to find a piece of property that these moths would arguably like, if you will, and get a restriction, a conservation restriction? Or can you simply donate or give money to a conservation group?
There are options. You can find the off-site land and put a restriction on it, or transfer it over to a conservation entity. Alternatively, you can provide off-site funding that go, that would go into an escrow account that would be used for, like a conservation group for land protection, some sort of management project, habitat restoration. That would be, would be approved by natural heritage, so there are a suite of options there.
Does that, does that mean, or does that have to be a local group?
Not necessarily. Ideally, that's our preference.
But it doesn't have to be?
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Brian specifically?
I just have a question. Do we have, didn't we have the same issue with Satchin's path?
We did.
Oh, we did not.
No, we definitely did. They, they had the issue. Jim, just speak into your mics so everyone can hear you. They, they definitely had the issue. They had to mitigate on-site. I can't remember the exact numbers, 1 point?
Yeah.
I know it is, I just still can't remember it.
Yeah.
1.09 was protected on-site, and 12.75 acres off-site in Tom Nevers' set aside. Transplanted species were protected.
I know you didn't study this, but do you know what the difference is? It's just, it's right next door.
I don't think it's complete. The study isn't complete yet, correct?
Yeah, the, the study's ongoing, and once we wrap that up, we will be submitting formally with natural heritage. But the differences there were, there was also some rare plants. Based on habitat conditions, there was more grassland species. But for their impacts of the moth habitat, they did provide that mitigation off-site on the Tom Nevers' land.
Just to be clear, that was town land?
Correct.
That was given, you know, the, the town allowed Satchin's path to do that.
Okay.
Currently, there's no plant species that you've identified on that site that's, that's restricted that...
Based on our consultation with natural heritage, the site is not mapped for rare plants.
Brian, I'm curious, how does that work? Does, does the applicant identify, i.e., you identify the rare plants and species if there are any, or does the state come down and do that?
The state has a database of rare plants, yeah.
It's more a general idea that they may be there?
It's based on data collection.
Got you. Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak specifically to this issue?
Can I ask a question first, just to clarify?
Absolutely.
So who, who provides the data about the rare plants to Nat?
Any observations that are submitted, there's a vetting process.
So, did you, so, so you submitted, or you, or LEC submitted to National Heritage, and then they verified what you submitted?
We have been, we provided some level of information on habitat conditions out there, and they reviewed aerial photographs to, to confirm their species list.
I have one more question before we go to the audience. How does, how does the wide swath of cleared area? I'm gonna wait for a second. How does the wide swath of cleared area, which was roughly 25 feet by the full depth of the, of the property, how does that fit into not disturbing habitat?
Exploratory soil testing is exempt from review with natural heritage. We were in consultation with them in advance and during that process, and, you know, no grubbing occurred, so if things were to go away, then the habitat would easily restore itself.
Okay. So you, you had tacit approval, if you will?
Correct, yeah. We had email exchanges with them to let them know what was going on.
Can you provide those to us?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, so the audience, go ahead, just please go up to a mic. I know who some of you are, but identify yourself for the tape.
Hi, Mickey Perry. I just have a question on those, on that data that you just mentioned. Is there a date on when that occurred? Is it current? As in, you said you started in August. The data for natural heritage is, or has been what you're going on from 19, for 2016?
Uh, no. 2017, and there's an ongoing moth survey right now.
So it's current?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Attorney James Timmons. I've been asked by a number of folks on South Shore Road to represent their interests. I, I too have been speaking with Jesse Lettich, and while I don't challenge, I haven't seen that email, and I don't challenge the statement by Mr. Madden, it's, it's quite inconsistent from what I've been hearing directly from Mr. Lettich. And I've provided information that I've received from Mr. Lettich, and I'll supplement that. I just got, today when I was on the ferry, I got another email from natural heritage that included a number of exchanges between the applicant and Mr. Lettich, and he's the reviewer, and then he has an assistant, Emily Holt. Well, what I don't understand about this, and what I think is inconsistent, is that as late as June, natural heritage was talking about what was going to happen on this site. And then the emails that I've received that I'm, I will submit tomorrow indicate that they approved a review protocol fairly recently, and that the review of what species are on the site is still ongoing. There's another event that's supposed to occur in August. It's the final one of a series of reviews. Apparently, they're going, they go in at night, and that's something that Mr. Madden could explain better. But until August, when this last review occurs, Mr. Lettich and natural heritage don't even know what species are present on the site. So how they would say anything about on-site and off-site mitigation, I don't understand. And again, I'll provide the information. My thought was, and my request of the chairman, which is part of the record, I submitted it in time, so it, it's, I met the requirements of the open meeting law. My suggestion, my respectful suggestion is, is that you should hire a peer review on this particular issue, because it's extremely critical for this board to know what part of the sites, if any, are developable. And you don't know that, and how we can talk about traffic mitigation, how you can talk about landscaping, how you can talk about anything when the entire site is being developed here, as you well know. You look at any site plan of the proposed project, and every inch of the site's being developed, and to your question earlier about how does this work toward protecting endangered species, well, it's, it clearly doesn't. And I don't know if the butterflies are supposed to go somewhere down towards Sconset once this lot is found. I, I don't know enough about this process, but suggest that the board have its own expert just to do the type of peer review you're doing on traffic and determine what extent of the lot's developable, what parts of the lot can't be used for mitigation. And one of the quotes from Mr. Feely coming out of the box today was, they want to work, they want to move forward in a constructive, coordinated way. While I would say there'd be nothing more constructive and coordinated than for the board to know what parts of this site natural heritage is going to say in 10 months, or whenever they're going to complete their review, you can't do anything here. You have to go back to the drawing board. So I think it would be efficient for the process to get this natural heritage process moving more quickly. As Mr. Feely indicated in his comments, they started this over a year ago, and why it stalled out as, as it did, I don't understand, but I know that the neighbors would have greater confidence in what's going on if someone representing the town's interests were allowed to go on the site, someone who knew what they were doing, allowed to go on the site, review things, review what's been submitted to natural heritage, and conduct the same type of peer review we do for traffic or anything else. So I'd strongly urge the board to consider that.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, can we respond to that question?
Please.
For the Rocket Attorney, Arthur Reed. I want to call your attention the fact that this issue, the natural heritage endangered species issue, as well as for that matter, the issue that was just discussed regarding the archaeological study, relates only to state permits, not to local. You, in connection with this comprehensive permit process under 40B, are acting as the review board and permitting board for all town permits. These are not town permits. These are state permits, and they're within the jurisdiction of the state agencies involved. We've already said that we would agree to there being a peer review as far as the archaeological is concerned, but I think that on this, we're dealing with a very tactical issue that is handled by a state agency that, that considers it. As far as the question, and Brian can speak further to this, as far as the question of the timing on this, I know that one issue is that the experts who have to consider the lepidoptera on the site, the moths on the site, have to take into consideration the life cycle of those insects, and that the, their presence can only be determined at certain phases of their life cycle. And that's why our understanding is that the moth expert that's working on this, Mark Mallow, has indicated that he will be able to complete his study sometime in probably the early part of August, once again, based upon the life cycle of the moths and when he was able to start with the project. It can take a year, actually, because we're dealing with annual life cycles, in the case of many of these animals. And therefore, I think that the interests of the public are adequately protected by the, by the Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program, and that it, it would accomplish nothing to have a, a further peer review, which again is outside the scope. The peer review is being done as for practical purposes by natural heritage. They are experts in the field. They're not taking information from us and, and just accepting it without further review and investigation on, on their part. And as far as the impact upon the project is concerned, we cannot really simply say that we will go forward with a application at this point to them. We're not finished with our proceedings before this board. Whatever we wind up with, whatever we wind up with before this board, will have to be unnecessarily reviewed by them, and, and if there are any instances in which any on-site mitigation is going to be required, we'll have to deal with that, we'll have to come back to you. I'm sorry if that's the way it is. There's nothing we can do about that point. But in any event, I don't think that the, there is any need for any independent review. The, the procedure with natural heritage, as far as the species are concerned, is that we, in this case, Brian, uh, uh, the representative of the applicant, of the property owner, goes to them and, and indicates that they propose to do a project. They propose to do work of a particular type and scope on a piece of land, and, uh, it's mapped as habitat. The state doesn't promulgate regulations or, or lists of what species are likely to be found on any particular site. Only when you approach them and ask them for a species list do they produce it, and that's exactly what happened here. The species list, the moths in question, were listed by them and provided to LEC, uh, by, by the, by the, uh, natural heritage people. So that's the procedure, and again, I think we, uh, really should be looking at this as something that, uh, is extraneous from the ZBA comprehensive permit process, and will be handled through the, uh, people at the state who are expert in the field, and any inconsistencies between their approval and your approval will simply have to be worked out later on.
Thank you. Um, I did ask town council to give me some guidance on this, and, uh, I could, I, maybe I'll just summarize, and if, uh, to make a long story short, uh, in large measure, she agrees with Arthur's position as to this is a state issue, uh, it will be worked out by the state. We cannot compel the developer to do anything other than what they're doing. Well, they are doing what, what's necessary. Is that a fair, you wanna probably summarize your own thing?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Ilanda Corp., KP Law. Yes, you did ask me to look at this issue. Attorney Timmons, who spoke earlier, had given a letter last week on the 17th, and I did provide an opinion the next day on the 18th on this issue. And there are a number of issues, not to be long-winded about it, but I think it's an important issue that is of great concern, so, uh, with your permission, I will address it.
Go ahead.
Um, the first is whether the ZBA has the ability to say to the developer, stop what you're doing, stay the, the application process before the ZBA, and go back to, uh, national heritage, apply for the permit, and go through that process, and complete that before you come back to the ZBA. And in my opinion, the case law is clear that the ZBA does not have that power. There is administrative case law developed by the HAC, which expressly states that that is not a power that the, that the ZBA has. It's a separate state permit that will be sought, and so the jurisdiction is separate, it's not before the board, and so there is no power on the part of the ZBA to say to the developer, you need to seek your permits, all of the permits that you need to get, in a particular order. They absolutely must get all of the state permits that, that they need in order to pursue the project. But then the question becomes, how does, how does that whole process interrelate with what the, the board is doing? While the board does not have jurisdiction over the, um, the national heritage matters, and the, national heritage will go ahead and, and act on that permit, what this board does have the authority to do is to peer review anything that is before the board. So if there are any reports that are out there that become part of your record, you can ask that those be peer reviewed. And you also have the authority to look at any local concern that you, that you identify. One of the local concerns, of course, can be the protection of the natural environment. Since you are not able to compel the, um, the applicant to provide you with an independent study with regard to impacts on the natural environment, you certainly, as we discussed the last time, you can ask the, uh, select board for funds to go out and conduct an independent study of that issue. And in the event that this board feels that that's an important issue, then certainly you can vote on that and send it, and send it off to the select board. And I did appear before the select board recently, and they indicated, uh, you know, certainly support, uh, for this board to go forward and, and do whatever independent studies might need to be done. I think it's just a question, as you go through this process, of identifying what those interests are. And so, again, one of the things that you'll need to do as you go through the peer review process is to have the experts that you've already hired to do the general review, have them come back and make a determination in their reports as to what further investigation may need to be made. And obviously, this is early in the process, so you haven't quite gotten there yet.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so, uh, how does the board feel about?
Ed, this is Ed Marchand. Could I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Um, I defer to Alana and, um, Attorney Reed, um, and I agree with, with what they said. I'm looking at it from a very practical perspective, that of a developer and a board and neighbors, uh, on what appears to be a contentious project, in that, in terms of potential issues, the natural heritage seems to be perhaps the most critical issue from my perspective. And in general, sort of identifying the most critical issues, addressing them, and having an independent peer review, uh, as happens on traffic studies, uh, is usually a way to move a project along, and benefits not only the public and the ZBA, but also the developer in terms of resolving issues. So whatever method is used, I think this really is a critical path issue, and should be addressed as soon as possible. I was encouraged by Attorney Reed's comment that the, uh, life cycle, uh, should be attainable by August, or the last information is necessary. I'm not sure if I was correct on that.
Mm-hmm.
But again, I don't know why a developer wouldn't wanna get this behind.
Uh, I agree. So, but to be clear, there are two different things we're talking about here. Peer review, which is reviewing what the developer gives us, or an independent study, which peer review would be funded by the developer, but it's relatively narrow. And they're, they're reviewing what is, the developer's, uh-
Yes.
-given us.
Right.
The independent study would be something we would have to ask the selectmen to provide. Go ahead.
I think the independent study, in this case, makes, makes more sense than doing a peer review, because natural, national, natural heritage, you know, the, they're not working for the developer, they work for the state. Um, you know, so, having a peer review, review what natural heritage has come back with, I don't think gets us as far as having an independent study go out and actually look at the property, look at the species. Um, it just seems odd to me, and again, not my area of expertise at all, in any way, but that sachem's path would have come back with, um, flora and fauna that needed to be transplanted and moved, and then right next door, there's none? That seems odd to me. And I don't know, but I would, I would just, I think it would be good for the neighborhood and for the town to have reassurance on that, on that point, so.
Okay.
I, just one person, but I support the.
And, and Mr. Chairman, just pointing out, exactly correct. You either need to have something that has been submitted to the board that then would be peer reviewed, or there needs to be an independent study done of, of some kind. And right now, there is not a study, and so then, one of the questions for the applicant is whether, with respect to the information that is going to be presented to national heritage, whether they are willing to submit that to the board, so that the board can have that peer reviewed.
Yeah. Go ahead. Brian, did you wanna speak to this?
Yeah. Uh, thank you. Uh, just to answer, uh, the question relative to sachem's path, um, the reason why there was rare plant issues on that particular project was the habitat conditions, uh, were slightly different, associated with the old burial ground, being a sampling grassland type habitat. That's where that particular rare plant was, was located, uh, proximate to, to that area. But the remaining portions, and what they needed to provide mitigation for, uh, was for the moth species.
Okay.
Is my understanding.
Uh, Susan, to your point of asking, or seeking a independent study, I'm all for it. That probably, that probably would not happen before August, and if the moths only have, you know, a one-time deal a year.
Well, I mean, I, I believe, I mean, I think that the moth problem is a legitimate issue, and there, that's gonna be handled. It's, sort of, the rest of it seems a little bit fuzzy to me.
Okay.
But, but, I mean, and I feel like the select board was very supportive of pursuing. But again, I'm just one person, so.
I agree with you, because there's a, there's-
I agree that it's fuzzy. I, as far as I can tell, I don't think anybody's gone on that site and looked for any sort of plant.
Stick into the mic, please.
I don't think anybody's gone to that site and looked for any sort of plant material that may be of concern, as far as I can tell. Is that true? Has, has anybody from your operation walked that site and specifically tried to identify plant species that?
We, we have assessed habitat conditions, um, for, you know, general rare plants on Nantucket. Uh, for the most part, if not all rare species on Nantucket, all rare plants, they're primarily associated with sampling grassland type habitat, uh, whereas the interior of this site is, is very dense scrub shrub, coastal heathland, woody vegetation. So it's, it's not really providing suitable habitat for, uh, rare plants in the interior. Um, and, and just to, to make a point on the, the moth survey that's ongoing, um, the results of that aren't going to influence natural heritage opinion of the project proceeding forward as is. It's only going to dictate the outcome of the mitigation requirements, uh, as it relates to the permitting process. Um, so, I mean, we're following natural heritage's lead on what the requirements will be, and we're adhering to them, uh, as directed.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think we had somebody standing waiting over here.
Did someone else wanna speak in the back?
Dave's right there.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to know if the whole entryway by the police department right now is full of people trying to get in this room, and they can't hear. So I don't know if there's a way we could single file, someone sit in the aisle, but there's a lot of people that have taken time out of their busy days to come that have interest in this, so, what can we do?
Okay.
Turn off.
Settle down. Uh, so there is an issue with the open meeting law. Everybody who wants to participate has to be able to participate. I, you know, I, I'm guessing that you're not supposed to sit in the aisle from a fire safety standpoint, so what we can do is try to make a, and we can either try to squish everybody in, or we can try to see if the, uh, uh, the school auditorium is available right now and go over there. I mean, that, squish is fine with me, I'm not, I have a seat, so.
Can you sit here, so that we can open up those two seats? No, I know that.
How many people are outside?
Probably thirty, forty.
Don't, don't you have to advertise what place you're leaving?
Well, I think once-
You can let you start, you can move to another-
Once, once we start in the advertised spot, we can then move. I'm not advocating that plan, because it's already four, five-thirty and almost, that would take time.
Can we move our desks back?
I don't know if these move.
Uh.
Can people sit up here on the floor?
It's fine with me, come on in, come on down.
Everybody has to be able to get in the room.
Yeah.
No, I can't take in.
If everybody would try to get into the room, we'll see if that works, and if it doesn't, we'll go to Plan B.
Do people stand back here, behind us?
No.
Why?
No.
Right.
Let's just see if we can move it down.
We could put a few people in there, Timmy.
I, I don't know.
No. I don't think so. They might be, but they don't look all.
Yes, uh, it's a little awkward. Uh, let's see, let's see how many people are really needing to get in.
A lot of people left, Ed.
Yeah, I mean.
There's more room up front, if people will let people come in.
Well, there's plenty of room here. There's probably twenty seats right here on the floor, if, if you're okay with it.
A lot of seats have gone, they were over thirty when I came in outside, but there was, can't hear up here.
Okay, then we would have to postpone and get a bigger room. The room upstairs is smaller. Can we put the video upstairs?
No, there's not live video. That does not live video stream.
If there's a video from upstairs, and then if you wanna speak, leave.
Okay. Terry, Terry says there is no live video available upstairs? Okay. I know.
That's okay, but.
Well, okay, we're gonna check on the, uh, viability of putting the video streaming upstairs, so if you then have, wanted to say something, you would have to come downstairs.
Would you get chairs from the, the training room, bring them down, people sit back here?
It's fine with me.
All right.
It's fine, I, I was looking forward to being here all afternoon, but, uh, post-
What about the people who left, though? I feel bad.
I, I hear you.
Mr. Chairman?
Cormac wants his space.
Go ahead.
Just a, a question, uh, Cormac Collier, just a question. Since Mr. Feely had stated that they may be making modifications, is there an actual point in making a traffic impact assessment presentation today that may change based upon future modifications?
Well, I don't, I don't think we have gotten there yet, but-
Well, I'm sort of getting to the point that if we're gonna be presented information today in a manner that really isn't suitable for pub, gathering public comment, maybe we should, you, as the board, should think about postponing.
I mean, postponing is, uh, the, the, the only issue with postponing is I would need to get, uh, agreement from the developer to give us another month, uh, or another period of time, because we do have, uh, statutory deadlines that we have to meet, and it, it's compressed, so.
I'm not here next week.
Ed, could I make a comment in favor of the traffic?
Sure. Please.
If there is a modification, you can assume that the number of units will be reduced. So it is, it would not be a waste of time to take a look at the, uh, or listen to the traffic presentation, in my opinion.
Hi, there are you.
I have to keep it up.
Okay.
People have left, which is-
Okay.
So, uh-
So.
We need to continue to a place that's larger.
Yeah, it sounds to me like we need to continue to a place that's larger. Um, unfortunately, it's difficult, because we don't know when the room is available.
Larger than this would be the school.
Yeah.
Not even the LGI.
No, I'm talking about the auditorium.
Yeah, and that's got Dance Fest this week, so likely not available for most of this week.
And Susan's, Susan's away next week.
And I don't have a way to check availability of that, I mean, we could-
Well, okay, let me, let me ask this, can we? Can we, uh, continue to this room with the inten, to a certain date, with the intention of, of going to the other place?
We don't know the date.
Uh, in, in hopes it will be available.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you do need to continue to a new date, time, and place certain. However, in the event that you need to change, as you would, to another place, uh, you would need to certainly post ahead of time and advertise ahead of time. You know, perhaps the best thing to do would be to go a little more than, than two weeks out, so that you can advertise it, and so then everyone will have full notice of, of where that, where that's gonna be.
Yeah. Right, so.
Can I have, can, Terry?
Can I have, Terry? 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 So it's, it's not possible to do tonight or not possible to do at all?
Well, he's, he's checking with...
Yeah, there is another issue that people, it's been said that people have left.
No, 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 but I mean for a future date, then you could make this arrangement.
You have to turn into your phone and...
Thank you.
What'd he say?
You cannot stream upstairs.
Yeah.
At the current time, or can they set it up, say, three days from now? You know, can we do this three days from now? No, okay.
Well, the difficulty with that, certainly you could continue as long as you give the proper posting, which is forty-eight hours in advance. You could do it for later this week, but the difficulty is knowing where you're going to do it. That's, that's the problem.
It sounds like that's not an option anyway to do upstairs combined.
Well, what if, if you, somebody streamed it on their computer upstairs? You could do that, is I think what he said.
Yeah.
That's what?
Could we do it somewhere else?
You can livestream to your...
Your house?
Right, you need to probably have a screen that everybody can see.
Yes, if you do, if you do remote participation, which does happen when you have overflow crowds, you would have a video at the remote locations that would have both video and audio and a way for anyone who wanted to participate who was in one of the remote areas, they have a question or a statement that they wish to make, there needs to be a means for that to happen. And there are two ways typically that it's done. One is that there's someone in the remote room with a phone, and then they can call it in and put it on speakerphone, or they call down and, and then they, and then they say that they're coming, and then you wait and they come down to the, to the main room.
Ilana, does it have to be a town property? Like, could, you know, do we have to go to the high school, or could we go to like the VFW or some other?
It needs to be a publicly accessible place. Certainly the ability for people to get in and out.
Does that mean it has to be?
Handicap accessibility is very important.
Which I think most places would be. Well, they have kids there all the time.
Well, we're not going to determine the place today because, other than here again, with the notion of then continuing when we get a room.
What I would...
We don't even know when this room frankly is available. It's a royal...
I think that, I think that Eleanor had, had a number of dates that were potential, that this was potentially available, and my recommendation would be that it be, you know, two and a half to three weeks out so that you can advertise the new location that be, because if there's a change in the location that really, that should be advertised. You certainly can do a lot of outreach and so forth, but you, you want to be as transparent as possible so that...
Absolutely.
What if we...
I got you. Wait one second.
I was just going to say, what if...
Ed, Ed, go ahead.
Do you have a notice in the newspaper, or do notices have to be sent out to all abutters?
I would, I would frankly, if we're going to change the, the location, I would say at least advertise once in each of the two successive weeks and, you know, send out the, the legal notice to the, to the abutters. Again, that's usually not a terribly difficult task, but to make sure that it is fully transparent and that people really have noticed, the difficulty, Ed, is that we're informed, and this is a danger of sitting in the front of the room, which is what I was doing. I didn't realize that there was this overflow. We've gotten reports that a number of people, tens of people, came and then were turned away essentially because there wasn't room to come in, and that's, that's, that's a problem.
Does that answer your question, Ed?
Yes, mine was a technical question about...
Right, okay.
...notice requirements were, and I think Eleanor is saying, do whatever you did for the initial hearing.
Yes.
A legal notice in the newspaper plus letters to abutters. Is that correct?
Yes. Okay, Arthur?
No, I was going to suggest that one possible way of handling it would be to postpone it to the next regular ZVA meeting, which is August nine, when obviously we have this room, without any intention of going forward.
Don't interrupt, please.
Without any intention of going forward at that time, but rather for the new location and time to be announced then and the, and the thing formally continued until then, but everybody understanding there will be no discussion whatsoever of anything other than scheduling at that, at that meeting, so they don't have to show up.
Okay. So what Arthur is suggesting is that we continue to August ninth with the intention of simply then continuing it again to, let's say, the high school on August tenth.
Mr. Chairman, the difficulty with that is that the public would have the same right to attend that session. You know, I understand what Attorney Reed is saying and, and a practical, from a practical standpoint, you know, I fully appreciate that, but everyone who came here today, including the people who were, who, who apparently were unable to get in, they would have the right to come to that next meeting, so.
They would have that right anyway, and they could come to that meeting if they wanted to.
And then if there were an overflow, you'd have the same problem.
But if it was just for scheduling...
Right, but what we're saying is, we're saying, we're, come if you want to, but all we're going to discuss about this is what rooms are available and what dates, and, and then continue it to a date certain.
Well, any time that you have a situation where you have an overflow, that can create open meeting law issues.
Right.
And so you could have this, and what I'm saying is that you could have that exact same problem even at a scheduling...
We could, except that I think all the people here in the room understand that we're, we would just be talking about scheduling, and maybe the thirty people who left would show up for that, but I think that the public who are concerned are doing a really great job of keeping informed of when the meetings are and knowing that, so.
But Ilana, you're, you're saying that those thirty people, if they didn't show up at the scheduling meeting, could challenge things because they think...
If, if they can't get in, if you, if you can't get into the meeting, you could have the same problem. I'm just saying there's a risk to that.
I think...
If you continue now to a new date and time certain, and it's your next meeting on the ninth, and, and you come forward on the ninth, everybody understands who's here, that you're not going to hear substantive testimony, you're just going to continue to a new date and time certain at a bigger location to accommodate this, this large crowd. I'm just saying that you run the risk.
Right, and I under...
That many people show up again.
I under...
And if that happens...
Right, then we're violation. I mean, so we, I think, safer back, why don't we, I think Eleanor's on the phone.
She is.
Maybe she's trying to find it. Let's take a ten-minute, five-minute break. Maybe Eleanor will have found a room, the high school for us on a date certain that we can just continue to.
Is, are we trying to move today? Oh, no, because those people left.
No, 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 not today.
Right, okay.
No. But having said that, Eleanor probably should have asked when we were here, because I'm certainly not here the rest of the week.
I'm, I'm, I'm away, I'm away, I get back on the...
So we'll take a brief, brief, brief break. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, she's on the phone with her. She's talking to her right now, right? I don't know. Did he, did he have a... I don't know, but he does.
It was like, it was young.
He can hire, no. Here you go.
It's so funny when you see some, no, but yeah, all the time you see some...
Yeah, they're going to pay you.
Maybe I should try that stuff.
Although they do it some longer, like tap dance.
You have.
We need to start talking about something else.
Oh, here comes Eleanor. And you were going until what day?
I get back on the seventh.
It's the eighth.
The tenth is a Friday. It's a Mariah Mitchell cocktail party.
Oh, yeah, you're right, so that would be Wednesday. So that would be, that would work. No, you're right, because this would be Thursday.
There's something else on the tenth.
No, eight. Not the nine, eight. Tenth is a Friday. It's Wednesday. So we'd have to do it the same day as our meeting, and then just move over there, or would we just do the meeting there?
We should just do the meeting there.
Uh, Eleanor.
Ray, sure. We could, just I don't know what time to tell them. She's saying hi. I mean, we continue to...
Are you yawning? Are you yawning?
Yes.
He doesn't, he doesn't... He yachts on his own. Jim, I don't know if I showed you my look in there. I don't know if I showed you my look in there. Ask who you, I, I heard there was some chat. I want it, so thank you. Otherwise, you weren't going to watch.
I was like, I found this package. No, I can't, I've already posted that.
I would love like a shirt.
I can't change that, it's already posted.
So we'd have to transfer it to your meeting desk.
I think we, I think we start this at five o'clock. And if we're done, if we finish early, go home, rest up, and then come back at four five.
Take the edge off.
You know, but I think all these people work. That's why we decided four-thirty and to get to...
We could do, we could do several ones to have the regular meeting here, and then make sure that girls get...
Yeah, I think that's why we should do that.
Is the developer... Hello?
That was me, I'm trying to get through.
All right, check, check, check.
Hello?
Hello, we're coming back. Can you all sit down, please? Thank you. So it appears that we can get the high school auditorium on August ninth. That is our regularly scheduled day. So we will, we're thinking we would, well, we would have the regular meeting here or there, it doesn't matter.
Here, because it's already posted.
And then we'll adjourn that meeting, and then we'll have the service line crossing here, and it'll be a separate posting order at the auditorium at five.
Okay.
Can you repeat that?
I mean, I would prefer to do it earlier myself, but...
Well, I've already, we'll do it at four, the regular meeting.
No, 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 one, one, well, it's hard to predict how long...
We could do it at four-thirty, like this time.
How long?
I mean, I thought the point of trying to do it a little later was to allow people to get to this meeting.
Yeah, Eleanor, what's the August ninth agenda look like? Do we know?
It's four-thirty, we started.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about four-thirty, about five.
Ed Holden, we get, get an idea?
Two old business items, new business items on August ninth, the meeting starts at one.
So we could easily go into four-thirty, right? On the regular meeting.
Three and a half hours? All right, let's just say five.
I think we say five.
What?
No, what?
No, what?
No, one o'clock is for the regularly scheduled meeting. For the six other cases that we already have, it has nothing to do with this. We would then adjourn that meeting because it would be here, and then we would go over to the high school. We're just trying to determine what time, whether or not we'd be finished with the regular agenda by four-thirty or five. Five is probably safer.
I'd probably say five.
Five.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to drive over there to find parking, and the traffic could be bad.
All right, thank you. Check, the developer, is that okay? The ninth, ninth at five.
Five o'clock.
All right. So, let me just confer with Ilana. Ilana, are we good to go?
We need to vote, right?
Yeah, Eleanor.
Can you vote?
Okay, can you be, I'll be quiet for a moment, we have to take a vote. Okay, so August, oh, we would also, I think a continuance, I mean, an extension is within our...
Yeah, we mean...
Yeah.
So is the developer willing to grant the month extension because of this? Thank you.
Just so you know, Mr. Chairman, there's an issue about the advertising, as to whether you can re-advertise in time because the deadline may have passed.
It's not a new hearing.
Well, but, you know, we are, we've had people who have been turned away, so...
Well, that's, that's not two weeks.
They weren't turned away, they just...
They couldn't get in.
Well, they, I, people could have filled in more if they had said, please fill in more. I just, we didn't turn them away.
All right, don't everybody talk, please?
I'm just saying, like, the, the verbiage of they were turned away, that's not really the case.
That they were not able to get in.
But, but since the meeting's in two weeks, if it doesn't make it this paper, it'll be the next paper.
The issue is if I were one to be able to have a legal appearance in the paper two consecutive weeks, I would need it to be in this week's paper. The deadline was Monday, passed yesterday. I can call the paper and we'll...
She was here.
Josh, you definitely get it in next week's paper, I just don't know if I can get the ad in this week, but I will certainly make a phone call tonight and see if I can do that.
Thank you.
Let's try.
Does the FCA have a motion for a public hearing?
Yeah, we're going to, yeah, we're going to get to that. Okay, so we're still going with the ninth, and with the hopes that the newspaper accepts the ad.
As to the extension date, we need to approve an extension date, so currently...
What was it?
Currently the deadline for this application is... November fifth, with the close of public hearing, so should we do...
December fifth?
December tenth. One, two, three, four, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
November thirteenth would be our normal regular meeting in December.
Works for me.
Does it work?
December thirteenth. Okay, so can I get a motion to accept an extension to December thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? No. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so then in terms of the continuance, can I get a motion to continue to August ninth at five o'clock at the school auditorium?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. High school, good point.
Nantucket.
The Nantucket High School, the Mary P. Walker High School auditorium.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Five o'clock. Okay, so, Kieran seconds, made the motion, Jim seconded it. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
We can carpool over there, so.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Kieran makes a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Lisa seconded. Any further discussion? No. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, God, I have ten minutes to make for Annie's.
Thanks, Ed.
Annie's Whole Foods. Can I get my coffee? No, 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 no. To bring tomorrow.
Ed, I told you my bag would bring us lunch.